Yeah, I'm gonna call the School District of Bayfield Board of Education regular meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Can we have a roll call, Linda?
Nicole Boy.
Here.
Glenn Carlson.
Here.
Missy Trivobit. Cindy Gary.
Here.
Larry Derrigan.
Here.
Craig Clubman.
Here.
Debbie Knau.
And if everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, can you confirm our meeting posting for tonight's meeting?
We can confirm that tonight's meeting was posted at all designated locations.
And can we have an approval of the agenda? Hi Debbie.
Second.
Motion by Craig, second by Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Number six this evening is our audience and written. We have some written and some Our first written is just a thank you to the Bayfield Lions Club for donating $900 for the end of year field trips for the eighth and twelfth grade students on behalf of the school district. Thank you for the continued support and concern for the students, the community, and the district. Your efforts are recognized and appreciated. Sincerely, Mr. Gordon. And our second is another thank you from the School District of Bayfield to the Nishinabe Fund of the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation for approving a partial grant request in the amount of $2,147 for the Baga Adewin Lacrosse through the Bayfield School District project. Enclosed, oh no, our grant agreement was enclosed. So, thank you for their support and concern for our students, the community, and the district. Great project. From the audience, we have Mr. Rick Erickson. You wanna come up to the microphone?
First of all, my name is Rick Erickson. I'm a district resident and also a teacher in the district. And I just, I wanna address the teacher contracts. I know they'll be addressing in executive session, just to make a couple of comments. I know that Erica's gonna come up in a little bit also and talk a little bit about our request that the district honors steps and lanes as well as a cost of living increase. And so I just wanted to make a couple of points. One of them is that really what we're asking for is dialogue. In negotiations, there really wasn't a lot of dialogue back and forth. There was proposals of our proposal to the district, the district's proposal to us, and then not a lot of conversation after that. I respect the Finance Committee for allowing us to have some dialogue the other night. That was very helpful. I know a couple of times comments were made about the fact that the district has done the minimum of what they have to do with respect to Act 10, which means that they have to accept our proposal and we accept your proposal. But we're really hoping that we do more than a minimum, just like you, just like we would assume that you expect more than a minimum of teachers. And we would really hope that we would have more chance for dialogue. So, and we made that note, Jeff took thought on that, that moving forward, we'd like to have more dialogue with respect to a lot of things. Negotiations, staffing, what happens with students. We really feel like we have a lot of experience in the district and that our voice is valuable. And so we'd like to continue to have those dialogues. But specifically with respect to the contract, I just because I know that this will happen in executive session, so you won't have a chance to really hear our voice there. I just wanna make sure that we have the history in place that, you know, after Act 10, contracts pretty much, or salary schedules went away. When Dr. Asland was here, he recognized pretty quickly that retaining and recruiting teachers without a salary schedule was near impossible. And so we worked together to put a salary schedule back in place. And the one restriction you put on us was that it couldn't look like the previous salary schedule where you simply advanced based on years of experience. So we really felt like we put together a salary schedule that honored educator effectiveness, which is all about teacher growth. So when teachers successfully complete educator effectiveness, they move up on the salary schedule. Or if they were to get an advanced degree like a master's, or get their National Board certification, they would advance on the salary schedule. And so we put that in place with the idea that that would incentivize teachers to do those things, to grow as teachers and to get advanced degrees. And so when, when we receive an offer that is just a cost of living increase, which keeps us steady as far as line goes, and we have to take advanced degrees and educator effectiveness out of that before, before we attach that to the salary schedule, it really means that the salary schedule advances less than the cost of living increase. We're taking, we're taking advancements in teachers' professions out of a cost of living which decreases what's there for everybody. So we're asking that, just like the salary schedule was put in place, the intent was to incentivize teachers to do those things, to get degrees and to complete educator effectiveness. And we'd like to honor, we hope that you would honor, that you would honor steps and lanes as well as the 2.44 percent cost of living increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Also from the audience, we have Eric Iverson.
Yeah, the transcript is out and the print is working. So, we've got two things here. One is Mary Lou Steffen asked me to give this to you. So, let me give you remember one
Appreciate you giving the topic.
I don't know, I can read this for you, or would you like me to read this for you?
Sure, go ahead.
Dear School Board members, dear School Board members, I am unable to attend this board meeting but would like to use my three-minute communication time for this letter. Last year about this time, Jason Loops was asked to fill a fifth-grade elementary teaching position. He agreed before he accepted a job in a different district. The full-time physical and health position he was removed from was never filled. Please be informed of the changes that this has caused in our district. The LA Point PE taught by a non-PE staff member, Friday, sixth-grade PE taught by a non-PE staff member. Kindergarten through eighth-grade PE staff classes were combined. No other specials or classrooms have been combined. The combining of class, class caused 28 to 30 middle school staff, students on one half of the gym while 28 to 30 first graders were on the other half. Thirty first graders standing shoulder to shoulder on the red line for attendance and instruction don't even fit on the space provided. The number of students on IEPs is increasing and the two PE staff don't have enough time to meet the special need demands of the district. Eighth-grade health is combined and too large for, for the health room now meets in an LRC. There are some changes, other changes in the physical education department that have a big impact on course, course offerings and scheduling. Some of the high school PE classes are offered as a 47-minute class period instead of a block. This doesn't allow us to get off the campus for activities. This class is taught by two different teachers, one teaching two days a week and the other three days a week. High school health class would be offered as one-period class. This would open up the high school course options more for high school students. On a personal note is my personal philosophy that education comes before recess time. Open gym times that are offered during the instructional day is a reason middle school needs a morning recess and a lunch recess. The middle school students could go outdoors after lunch and the gym would be available for instruction. I hope that our school board, parents, and administrators, colleagues, and support staff understand the complicated position we are all in when it comes to scheduling. For every action, there's a reaction just waiting to be tried and reviewed. Thank you very much for your time. Please feel free to contact me on cell phone and I'll read
Thank you, Eric. Are you, you have more?
Yeah, there's just more. Two for one today. This is my personal letter to the School Board, the administration about the, about the cost of living increase I proposed. Happy summer, everyone. It's good to see everybody. And don't take this personally, but I'd rather not be here right now. It's been a long, hard year, tougher than most for various reasons. I would like to say, for various reasons, and I would like to say that in conversations with other staff members, the overall morale is low. I fail to see why the School Board and administration would not want to honor all steps and lanes and give us the full 2.44 percent in each cell. We teachers are charged with the task of educating and taking care of the children of our community. Likewise, we look to the administration and the School Board to take care of all of us. Every day, we have teachers that invest their hearts and souls into providing a quality education for our students while dealing with so many other issues that occur on a daily basis. Likewise, we hope that you would invest into providing the basic cost of living increase to our staff. It is important for our students to know that we care for them. It is important for us to know that you care for us. I do appreciate the work the administration, the School Board does on our behalf, and thank you for listening sincerely, myself.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Iverson, is there any other audience? We'll move on to the approval of the School Board minutes from May 13th, 2019, our regular School Board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Debbie and a second by Cindy to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to communications and reports. I don't have anything. Do other board members have anything? Are there any future agenda items?
I have one, Nicole. I'd like to propose an agenda item for the July meeting to reevaluate the timing on the policy and finance committee meetings. I think the half hour with them being back-to-back, I know this last time, the finance overlapped into the policy and it just seems like it doesn't do service to either committee to have just a half hour. So if we can put that on the agenda for July, that'd be great.
I'd like to see discussion in the July meeting about, instead of running the school year so way late into June, why don't we add some time from the beginning of the year to the end of the year? Mother Nature's getting worse and worse, and here we are, running kids into the school late into June, and why don't we start from day one and extend these school days by a few minutes and prepare for this instead of having all these snow days? I mean, you get the kids in the building, the heat's on, the buses are running, why not? I mean, it doesn't seem like a handful of minutes per day has that big of an effect. And it might, you know, you got these short 47-minute classrooms, why not stretch them out? I mean, that's part of the conversation.
Add in five, six.
Why not start a little early and maybe go a little later, whatever works, and work it into the schedule? So we're not going this late. Like you guys said, you're burnt out. Every staff member that I talked to said, in the last week, if we're being honest, I mean, it's, we're watching movies and we're doing this and we're doing that, and why not just cram it into when everybody's here and focused and then end the year and go on your merry way?
We can add those two items and the administration can present them to us in July. 8.1.2, the Finance Committee. We are not changing the meeting time to 4:30. We are gonna start at 5 o'clock, the scheduled time in the policies. The 4:30 was only for the winter months. So that was just a, but we did meet, the Finance Committee met last week. We covered everything that's coming up down here and we covered the vouchers, the Viking motor contract. What else do we cover?
The Learning Center grant.
Yes.
The end of year spending, changing the committee meeting and the base wages for the three different groups, the teachers.
It was a long meeting, as Glenn noted. We had a long agenda.
That's where you get the big bucks.
Policy Committee. We met for a very, very short period of time because eighth-grade graduation was at 6 o'clock and really we didn't start that policy until probably 5:45 or 5:40-ish. So, we didn't get through a lot, and we'll bring that to you guys' attention when we get down to Niola. 8.1.4, our Wellness Committee. Did you, did you meet?
We did meet. And I saw in the minutes that it said we were going to meet, which Tuesday, May 14th.
We covered the wellness plan, I think.
Yep. And kind of finished that off. I don't believe there was anything that we were recommending for board discussion or action that I can think of.
I wasn't there. Yeah. I just, the plan. Missy's not here, so. 8.2, reports. We've, will be postponing administration reports to the July board meeting. As we've already made note that our staff is exhausted and just been pushing through the last few weeks of the school year with lots to do. 9.1, approval of the vouchers.
I move that we approve the vouchers in the amount of $655,308.14.
We have a motion by Glenn, a second by Cindy. Can we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Debbie Knau.
Yes.
Larry Derrigan.
Yes.
Cindy Gary.
Yes.
Nicole Boy.
Yes.
Craig Clubman.
Yes.
Glenn Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move on to our unfinished business. 10.1.2, consider Kevin Stramberg's strategic You want me to?
Yeah, so Nicole and I had a phone conference.
Sure. So, June 6th, Jeff and I had a phone conversation with Kevin after the last School Board meeting where we discussed kind of postponing the strategic planning comprehensive process to next school year because there's some real immediate action that we really need to have established. So we negotiated that with Kevin to identify him meeting with the administrative team over the summer, multiple visits. He did send us a proposal, and that's primarily what it would be, him meeting with the administration to establish where we are with the current plan before we try to jump into a new strategic plan.
Yeah, he also felt it was important, the current plan that we're operating on, keep moving on that, and then possibly look at adding the attendance as a fifth pillar because there's so much work district-wide going on with attendance, that that might be a fifth pillar. But he wants us to keep pushing forward on what we have, and then come January, we're gonna do the other end's focus groups.
So the focus groups will happen, but not till probably January?
Do we need a contract for an intended amount? Or approval, board approval? So Kevin's proposal for this additional services, $4,000, and that's with his discount. So I'll make the motion to approve the $4,000 addition to his contract for the additional services.
Is there a reason that, I'm sorry, we need to second it, we have discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so in discussion, is that, is there a reason why, are we postponing it into another calendar year for a financial reason, or we just aren't starting it in the fall because we just think January's a better time, or because of his schedule?
That's the schedule he proposed.
That's just what he proposed.
Yeah.
He, 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 he wants us to continue on the current plan, obviously.
Right.
And the $4,000 that he's proposing now, that wasn't part of our discussion with him on the 6th. It came forward tonight. So, I need a little more clarification of that, if the board's wishing to do that. Otherwise, we would look at it and move forward with his proposal.
I just know that January is a more difficult, you know, if you're gonna have people going out for focus groups or traveling around, that January can be a little more difficult than October or November. So, that's just my question is continuing around. You know, we know this is what we want. We know this, we need to reevaluate. We need to look at this. Why wait until January? So that, I guess, unless anybody else has input that they're thinking that we talked about that, or I'm just curious, or if that's something we can ask him about. I know, just, you know, for Island people, it's a harder time to get back and forth and, you know, I don't know. So, that's, I guess, one of my, my first question.
I know that Mr. Stramberg, he attended the attendance, listening session we had on the 5th, and he came out of there with, with the intention of that as a main focus of the district. And for us to focus on that at the same time, look at what he's, what he's planning in the near future. He wanted to, like Nicole said, meet with school administration, with the current strategic plan, and then this fall, and then possibly add attendance to that because we're so into that right now. And then, but in terms of your question Deb, we could ask to move that up a month or two.
I just think, up here, we just don't move around as easily in January.
I understood that, that we would just take a break through the summer, but when the school year started, like when he was here, when he was in front of us last time, I thought we would just roll into it when the school year started, early fall, late fall, early winter.
And that was the original plan that he introduced last month when he was here, was to start in the fall. And then when we discussed kind of the current situation, where we're at, what the needs are, how do we evaluate and move forward, starting in the fall, that's where kind of this other lane came from.
I think we can work with him on the timeline.
Yeah, I don't think the timeline is as much of a, is set in stone.
But could you redress that? I mean, could you just find out if there's, because I think most of us were really hoping that this could get going in the fall.
We look at maybe, maybe after office, mid-October, delayed October, when people are settled in.
To start having groups, because we want everybody that wants to participate to be able to participate.
All right, we can talk to them all then.
And then the, one more, one more thing is, one of the things we talked about in our last meeting was a summary of that attendance meeting coming forward to the board because we knew that not everybody would be able to attend that. And when is that? I didn't get a chance to go through all of this. Is that something we could do?
Yeah, Mr. Erickson talked to me in that, that evening and said they're willing anytime. We'd like to put them on the, on the agenda.
Okay, well, I think sooner the better.
The ETAL group, every teacher there.
So can we?
July?
July.
ETAL update?
Yeah, what's it?
I think it's the 8th. July 1st, a Monday?
Yes.
The 8th. July 8th? I'm sorry, can I hear? More special, more special board. So the $4,000 is his additional to do the work over the summer, I assume, and then, and that, that is really focused on sort of where we are vis-à-vis the current plan. And the idea would be he'll meet with the board, with the administration this summer, and then come to the board in the first part of the fall with his findings, recommendations, whatever you wanna call it. And then we segue from that into discussing how we sort of put more meat on the bones on the rest of the strategic plan going forward. Is that the idea?
The comprehensive process.
Right, okay.
So you made a motion?
Yeah. Can we have a roll call for the approval of the $4,000? Linda?
Glenn Carlson?
Yes.
Debbie Knau?
Yes.
Larry Derrigan?
Yes.
Craig Clubman?
Yeah.
Cindy Gary?
Yes.
Nicole Boy.
Motion to approve. 10.1.3, I think the numbers are a little funky. Consider collaboration agreements with Red Cliff Tribal Council.
Okay, so we, we have a student who needs physical therapy services.
No, this isn't that. No, that's not.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is, I'm sorry. You'll make the remarks?
Sure.
Okay, so I, at the listening session on the 5th, I did have a chance to speak with the chairman, Mr. Rick Peterson. And there were three other board members, at least, in attendance. Chris Boyd, Lauren Gordon.
Brian.
Brian Bainbridge. And they were very enthusiastic of talking with the School Board on related issues that matter. They're open-minded at this point. They recognize the previous MOU, the strengths of the previous MOU. We all recognize the weaknesses of the previous MOU. They do too. And they want to collaborate what's best for kids and what's best for the community and share resources in that manner. At least that's, that's were his words. So however you like us to proceed on that.
Who's supposed to be putting this agreement together, what group of people?
Who's supposed to? I think we just need to call a meeting. I think, I think there's a lot of discussion on attendance right now in the community. There's a lot of sharing of resources to, to, to help facilitate that, that effort. I don't know if there's a written agreement at this point, more or less a...
So they acknowledge that the last agreement wasn't worked on?
He didn't come out and say that, but he did say that he would like...
I think Rick was in office.
Yeah, he wasn't in office at the time.
I understand that, but Brian was there.
Brian was there.
Well, we're moving on.
I don't understand what we would accomplish by having a written agreement. We've got policy in place. Why are we not just following the policy? We're policyed to death around here. Why don't we just enforce it? We've got policy in place for everything. So, I mean, I just, I think we keep it, I mean, I think it's great if they wanna be involved and that they are recognized a truancy issue because we've been beating our head against the wall on that since I got on this board. So, I mean, I just don't wanna see us getting back into these long-winded meetings with everybody having their little session and, and we're not getting any work done. I just think we just, we have policy. I mean, we can collaborate with them and, and they can bring stuff to the table too that can help us. But I just, I don't believe we have to have a written agreement again. I just think that's gonna convolute what we're all trying to do. I mean, we're all, this is an open meeting. Anybody can attend this. Everybody can come to this. I mean, I think, I mean, the meetings are in the school. We hold the one meeting over there, like on the reservation a year. We hold one on the island, and the rest of the meetings are here. The doors are always open. Everyone can come. I think we have, you know, if they're interested in it, why not open an invitation to sit in these meetings with everyone else? It's, it's the same. I mean, we have policy. Why don't we just follow our policy?
I tend to agree with, with Craig. I'm all for collaboration, but collaboration on what? Um, I'm all for collaboration, but collaboration on what? And I think when we have a on what, such as like on attendance, um, and our attendance gurus can come up with something that would require collaboration with Red Cliff, then we've got something that we can say, would you guys collaborate with us on this particular plan? And not have a, sort of a universal collaboration, um, when we don't really know what we're gonna be collaborating on, that's just my two cents.
Mm-hmm, I think that was the original intent when the discussion resurfaced, was to make sure it had focus, and it was intentional, and everybody knew who was doing what, and why, and how. Because there has been an impact, there's have been an impact since the MOU has not stopped, as much as we may not see it, or the board didn't feel that it was valuable, there were other people involved in that process that did feel it was valuable, and they did have positive impacts from it. Um, so maybe that's the gap, is that we were just not fully aware of what, that was happening behind the scenes, or vice versa. I can't speak for the council, that's for sure, so.
Well, and there's consequences, you will get a reaction, it might not be a positive reaction, but you will get a reaction. But if there is no consequences, there will not be a change. And I think that there are some consequences now, that people are taking notice, I mean, this is the last MO, the first MOU that I signed. It was a big spiel, everybody's taking pictures, and the law enforcement, Bayfield County Sheriff was there, and here, this is what we're gonna do. These kids aren't in this building, this is what's gonna happen. It didn't happen. There was no consequences, and some of the fines were so ridiculous, and the penalties, I don't even wa, I wouldn't even speak it in front of the camera, it was so ridiculous, about how it was handled towards the parents and the students, so, I, yeah, that's... I think it's great, we just need to have consequences and follow up on it, hold people accountable.
You know, like I said last time, you know, I, the last time we had a meeting prior to our abandoning the, the proposal, that, um, it just didn't seem to me like, other than the school board knowing what their responsibility was, but it, it seemed, sounded to me like the council didn't know what their responsibilities were, and, and what kind of, uh, activities, or what you would just say, expertise they had out there, that they didn't, never offered. You know, so, I don't know, I guess you're right, I didn't see, see any, uh, forward movement, so, I don't know. It seemed to me that when we're sitting down, and they're always putting the blame on the school board, because we weren't doing this the way they thought it should've been done, but yet, they weren't coming forward to tell us how they could be helping in that same position, so I don't know, you know?
It's hard when we can't just sit down as all caring community about our school. But these post, these, but we need to follow all this legalistic, you know, rules about how to have a meeting, and, you know, how, what, what can happen in a meeting, what can't happen at a meeting, and all that, and it's, it'd be really neat to somehow be, find a way to get out, look at it out of the box some way, where we can all be, and sit down with these, the folks that have been doing the study on attendance, and sit down and all learn and brainstorm, and, you know, divide up into some small groups, and do some thinking, but instead, we get sitting in chairs across from each other, all in our legal positions, and it's, it's hard. I don't know how to make it real different.
Maybe be as simple as enough as, um, Red Cliff tells us what resources they have available to the school, and the school tells Red Cliff what resources they have available.
That could be, and go from there.
That was the whole point when I wanted to bring it back again, is because I wanted to see us working together, instead of butt in heads, and what was going on. So, I mean, even with the island, I'm not just saying, I'm not even, you know, there's the island, there's Red Cliff, there's Bayfield Community, we're all part of that group, to work together and come up with resources on how to do what's best for our students here at Bayfield. And that's one another reason why I wanted to bring that back, is because Red Cliff is expanding, the resources are getting more. You know, um, we got the clinic there now for kids to go out there and do therapy, and whatever, you know, that's expanding. So, I just think that we need to keep all that in mind, like you said, resources, use our resources, and what we have here, working together.
So, I was tasked to do that, and we've done that, so, moving forward, do we want to, um, pause on the collaboration effort, but look at all an alternative way to focus with both, with what we do?
I'm curious with what we have right now on our table with this, this information about what the teach, this group has found out about absenteeism, what recommend, what findings. I'd like to see that, and I think we would all, both the council and the board, would, that would be something that would unify us in saying, okay, like you said, what are your resources, what are ours, what do you wanna see happen, what do we want, you know, and maybe it's just, maybe it's not an in-person dialogue, like you said, maybe it's just an exchange of information, but at least something to get us started around one specific thing, instead of saying, let's look at the whole school, K through twelve, and tell us what we could, you know, how we could make improvements.
Everyone's got different views.
Right, let's just get in one thing.
Well, we have the, Mr. Erst, the group will be up with us in July, and that'll be the start.
Right, and that's a start, and if any, anybody, like Craig said, anybody from the council can come and, anybody can come and sit in this meeting and hear that report. So, that might be something to share with the council, that we're having a report by that group at the board meeting on the eighth. If anybody wants to come and hear the summary of that group, feel free to come, you know, that's a ti, a chance to hear it.
Invite them.
Well, we'll keep it on the agenda to keep it rolling and alive, uh, so that when we do come to terms with what exactly that will look like, we can move forward.
And not only invite the, someone from the tribal council, what about the island?
Mm-hmm.
You know, members over there, have them come and listen too, because they're next to them too.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Uh, ten point one point four, approve Neola policies, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand.
I move that we table this till the next meeting. I think there's still some issues that need to be worked out.
We have a motion to table by Glenn, a second by Cindy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. We could add those on the policy and next month's agenda. Our new business this evening, ten point two point one, consider Viking Motors contract, two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty. Uh, Randy has prepared document, um, shows...
Showing what we paid this year for our special contracts, and what that increase would be based on the proposal that they've really brought forward.
Harold, do you wanna, do you wanna say anything about your proposal?
I would, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I'm here today to basically ask for more money for our drivers. Try to implement a program where we can pay more drivers, like maybe give them more money. I think that would help, so, now, one of the things I get caught with is, they say, well, the school owner pays for twenty dollars an hour. Well, it's, it was a janitor, and so, it's his job, but you got to benefit on top of this, so, why can't we get some more money? Well, they're, they're driving the bus, they're going through, it costs me a thousand dollars to get a license, and all for the bus driver. And we've gone through one to three, four, this last, last year, and driving. But I'm trying to establish some more money for the drivers, you know, amongst the five dollars a day, which in turn, for the year, costs just a hundred and ten dollars. I'm asking for a raise in the special trips. Twenty dollars an hour for the drivers, on top of that, I gotta get twenty-five, another five dollars an hour to cover the social security, and unemployment, and all that, as an overhead. I am not taking anything away from them on that money, it's above a wash. My, my proposal would be a seven percent increase for running, and taking care of the buses, for maintaining, mechanic there, year-round, having, uh, people getting a raise, and just some of the cost of us, the last year or so here, um, we got three international buses that are throwing us a fit, and International says they had a thirty-four dollar, hundred dollar package, where we can take them in and get them worked on. Well, that, that went by with the wayside, thirty-four hundred dollars is our cost. They're not, they're not putting any of the money to rectify their mistakes, so, and that's like ten thousand, two hundred, just for them three buses to go up there. They had to buy a chip for the, the transmission, uh, for the, you know, for the computer, for the computer, so, we had trouble with international transmissions, and cost a thousand bucks for just a chip for that, it costs for the software for four of the buses, uh, four thousand. And then we had a chip for the coming engines, for just the transmission for a thousand, nine, two thousand. You need a bus driver to get a license to run this player, just close to a thousand bucks. By then, I take them off, train them, take them over to Ashen, gets, runs them to the test, by then we pay to, pay all the hospitals, or the physical and stuff, it comes just a little under a thousand dollars for, for a bus driver. So, that's kinda where we're sitting, uh, and I'm not out here to indulge anybody, and just kinda pull our own here, so, there's another new bus coming, yeah, for the fall. Eighty thousand, eight thousand dollars, ten bucks.
And you intend to upgrade buses, those are cool.
Any questions?
How many years you done that?
I think it's fifty or fifty-one years, so, it's been plenty of time, nothing about me staring.
That's longer than I've been on this earth. Seriously.
And I also like, you know, get them renewed for six years if possible, with an opening every two years, on the contract for costs of any reason, if we need to.
I have, oh, I was just gonna say, I have a question regarding, um, on here, that there's some additional changes that the district is requesting, and has cameras and stuff like that. Do you have an issue with the cameras being put on the buses?
No, the only issue I have with the, with the cameras on buses, if they're gonna be put on, which I guess they're gonna be put on, then if something happens where we're gonna bring that chip in, and just get it screwed up. Uh, we have enough things on the books to take care of the discipline. Now, if we're gonna have the cameras, are we gonna take care of the discipline problem? We got a picture of the problem, are we gonna take care of it? Is the school gonna take care of it? If we're not, then there's no sense in having the cameras. It seems like the bus drivers say so is not valid anymore. Which, when I was going to school, the bus drivers said, oh, you're out, you know, because the bus drivers said this happened, this happened. That's not the case today. If we're gonna take pictures of it, are we gonna take care of it? And we just want, we got plenty of, plenty of stuff on the books that, that take care of all the discipline, we don't need to have it on the line.
The school's purchasing cameras?
Yes.
And then my next question I ask, I'm asking is, um, would you guys, it has on here about starting two hours late, how would that work with you guys with your bus drivers and stuff?
It's, it's, it might happen maybe once or twice a year. We can work around it. I don't know that it's gonna be that big of a help. And that two hours is called, and we still have a we, a weather problem, and we gotta call them the rest of the day, that's, you know, I'd like to have that decision. If it's raining, if it's ice, and, you know, if the ice is still there, we call it for two hours, hoping they're gonna get sanded and stuff. Well, I, I just can't send that, kinda buses out, excuse me, on ice, and, and expect everybody to come back without having a wreck. That, ice is the worst thing that can happen. A snowstorm, bad, we do make that speaking.
Harold, we call Harold, he says your name.
Make the motion to approve.
The full?
As it has been presented for the...
I'll second. There's a motion by Craig, and a second by myself. Could we have a roll call?
We have discussion?
To be open for discussion.
Okay, well, let's have discussion.
Um, I wanted to bring up an issue that's been bugging me for quite a while. Um, could you, is it, is it possible for you to give cultural sensitivity training to your bus drivers? We had an incident that came up a month and a half ago, it had to do with an Indian, young Indian girl, and then I'd hate like hell to see that happen again. I'd like to see you sit down, or somebody sit down with these guys, and just tell them how that impacts young girls.
That person's gone, my whole team is here.
Who?
That person that was driving the...
I understand that, Harold, I understand that.
They, um, I guess, uh...
We could provide the training, we could get somebody out of Red Cliff.
Well, we have a meeting up at school here, you know, for breakfast, and I think some of that brought up at that time, it might...
That might be a good time to do it.
I think that's what they brought up, and it hasn't been talked about, it hasn't been kicked under the rug.
When you have new drivers come on, is there an orientation that includes that, or is that just the one time, if you miss it, you're, you don't get it?
Well, you know, most of them always come up from the breakfast, and the meeting that, you know, about an hour long.
Mm-hmm.
It's talked about, and, and, you know, we talked about, we had meetings at the shop there, and we talked about it. We had two people that actually got, got let go because of some of, or this, we were talking about, going to go.
Okay.
And when is it gonna come out of their mouth? I don't.
Well, I understand that.
I have no idea. But they do, they do know the consequences if they do it. That they don't, you know? So, they'll have some other choice, either with her...
Well, we won't, we don't, we don't need to go into personnel matters, but I do agree with the training, and if we can improve even the onboarding, so there's more chance of preventing a situation like that occurring. I don't know what your onboarding practices are, I don't know what your orientations are, or anything, so.
Well, our main concern is, if there's something happen, I'd like to see the consequences take place. And, and not make any more rules, just choose what we got, that's all we need. But be firm with them, and it would help everybody there. In other words, if I'm not being backed up at school, like other drivers see that and say, what the hell, I don't, you know, I can turn this in, and nothing's gonna happen. So, on Wednesday, come and say, well, I'm gonna try to, there you are. But for a while, uh, you know, this happened, and that...
I think the cameras are a pain in the butt, but unfortunately, I think that's the way society is, and it's, and it's, and it's a must. It's, now it's a he said, she said, and to come to the board, and to come to you, and you can sit the proof down, and like I said earlier, there has to be consequences. I mean, who is responsible, who is making the call that says this person is not on the bus anymore? And like you say, and if you do that, we need to back them up, and if we see the proof... And if we see the proof, it shouldn't be an issue. But I mean, all, every time, every time that I've been involved with it, it's always the student acted up, but it seems like shortly after that, the student will make a comment that says, well, I was initiated by the bus driver doing this. And so, and in, and in every case that I've been involved, that has been the case. It's never been, well, just something happened.
Well, parents feel the same way.
Pardon?
They feel the same way.
Yeah.
That it's not, that their concerns, that their concerns are not being addressed.
We're not...
They're told to call the office and they get treated very poorly when they call the office to make a bus complaint, not here, but at the bus office. And those are the types of things we're asking to have some resolution, have some, have some cultural sensitivity training. It doesn't necessarily have to be called that, but you know, people shouldn't be treated like that when they call and are trying to resolve something and there's no resolution. It's just kind of like, no.
That call should load in the school. In the school, it should be called in.
And, and it has. It has.
Can I just say one thing? I go for Harold nineteen years, never had one incident on my bus, one, one rip seat in nineteen years. And I go along with kids.
There's, there's bus driver and then there's the bus driver. The bus driver can get on, be part of the kid. Other bus driver can be on and do other stuff.
John Houser.
Stomp.
But, you know, that's just personality. I can't change their personality, you know? And it's how they, how they wanna, how they wanna take control of what they're doing is, is up to them, you know? And, but, you know, fighting and stuff shouldn't occur then even.
Well, maybe something can...
Harold's always back.
Maybe something can take place at this breakfast you're talking about and that might just be enough.
For the students.
I say maybe just something that's set at the breakfast may be just, just enough.
Uh, we, we, we go through this.
Sure.
So, Harold, we'll definitely invite you to the August orientation when staff come back like we used to do in the past for that one hour that you're talking about for breakfast. We'll do that again and we'll work with the principals to add that piece to it of sensitivity and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I'm sorry that it happens twice this year, but like I was saying, I guess until what people, what, what comes out of their mouth and I can't tell by looking at it unless they're gonna do it either.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
See you at breakfast tomorrow.
And, uh, fifty-one years, let's see if I can make it downstairs. No, I rode an elevator up.
Harold, before you leave, I just wanna make sure that we have in the minutes that Harold said that he'd be fine with this going forward for six years, other than a cost of living every two years.
Yeah, the cost of living.
Okay, so I hope that will make it into the minutes. Thank you.
We appreciate your question. Thank you for coming.
If there's, if there's a cost of living increase on this part, you'll bring that forward.
Right.
I'm just gonna say, just because, is that if a kid acts up on the ferry, just something to think about, kids act, you know, we've got a monitor, but our people, different people take turns monitoring. And if a kid has, I don't know how it's rated, if it's a couple counts or whatever, but they lose their privilege to ride the ferry without their parent. The only way that they will be allowed to get to Bayfield is to be escorted by their parent. They will not be allowed to ride. So, those kids have some tough consequences. Or they don't come to school. So, you know, I think it's okay to have some tough consequences.
Mm-hmm.
And for everybody to know what the consequences are in front, to stick to it. Because some of the stuff happening on buses is pretty scary. And I think then we lose, we have adults that lose control because they're getting triggered on, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, something to think about.
Yeah. So, the motion is to approve the proposal, which is for regular transportation, two-hundred-eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-five dollars and a twenty-one point five-one percent increase for special trips.
To the biking address contract.
And seconded by myself.
Um, then, then also isn't that special needs route in addition also to the?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, that would be the twenty-five-nine-oh-three plus the two-eighty-seven plus the twenty-one-point-five-one percent, right?
Total amount is twenty-nine thousand.
Total?
Total amount.
Well, two different, so, so the, just the twenty-five-thousand-six-fifty-nine-twenty-eight, Randy, that's not included anywhere else, right? That's not down in the two-eighty-seven or the twenty-five-nine-oh-three?
No.
The increase of twenty-one-point-five-one percent?
No, that's not down there at all.
Okay, so it's the three, it's essentially those, all three numbers essentially, even though the special trips, we don't know how many there're gonna be, but that's an estimate.
Right.
Okay.
Twenty-one-point-five-one percent, yeah. Can we have a roll call, Linda?
You're here.
Was that me? Yes.
Glenn Carlson?
Yes.
Debbie Knopf?
Yes.
Cindy Gary?
Yes.
Can I have a go?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me dig my agenda back up. We'll move on to ten point two point two, consider Ojibwe three as elective or independent study.
All right, so Shelley is not here.
Mr. Reggie's here.
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere.
So, I wanted to ask Reggie to talk about the possibility of Ojibwe three course. This is not in the high school course descriptions, so in order for him to teach it, the board has to, to approve it so we can put it in the course description for the fall. Reggie, you wanna talk about the class?
My name's Reggie Kadada. I'm the language teacher here for Ojibwe. We have some students here who are pursuing language education and even, um, education degrees in the future. As I talk to them, they wanna go and be teachers and stuff. And where we're at in terms of Ojibwe language revitalization, there's a lot of schools and colleges, um, that are beginning to offer Ojibwe language to teaching programs for students to be able to attain their teaching license in the Ojibwe language. There's a lot more immersion programs coming up and other places where, um, these students would have a place to go, um, once they, once they graduate from our high school here. So, being that there's a student interest in learning the Ojibwe language, um, I've had a couple of students wonder about, um, Ojibwe three and Ojibwe four, and I told them we'd have to take one step at a time. And so, this is our first step here of, of getting a Ojibwe three approved by the school board on the, uh, course catalog, um, as an option for students who are wishing to pursue that type of, um, career. And we also understand about the, um, class size issue as well, so we put a proposal in there, if, you know, there's less than five students, that we would seek some way to help them independently study this stuff. You know, Ojibwe language is a, is a, there's a very, um, beautiful language. There's a lot of different pieces to it. I have a pretty good understanding of that and, um, what we're doing here at the school district with the elementary and, and some of the middle schoolers, um, working with those younger classrooms, I could see Ojibwe three classroom as kind of a resource development type of class, um, to be able to better understand the language, um, in that way. Uh, because when I go out and try to find resources to use in the classroom, there's always something dialectically, regionally dialectically different, um, where I don't really wanna use that here, um, to confuse other people, you know? So, there's a lot of creation of resources in my classroom and I would appreciate having some other students to be able to do that, um, so ten, fifteen years down the road, they can look back at Bayfield School and say, look, I helped develop that curriculum when I was in school there. Um, you know, so, we're just going through the step process here. Um, there was, um, somebody wanted to pursue college credit for Ojibwe language and, once again, I think we're at step one here, um, getting Ojibwe three approved and on the books. Um, you know, so there's, there's a lot of movement, um, in the educational world for Ojibwe language right now, so I would like to help those students out.
Reggie, are you aware of some of the col- colleges in our area that are offering Ojibwe language, so you can connect with some of them as well?
Oh, yeah. Um, a lot of those professors are my friends that I've met through different times in my life. Um, Northland College has a language program, um, University of Minnesota-Duluth, St. Clastica, U of M in cities, there, there's quite a few, um, as well as there are immersion schools, um, one in Hayward, Wadukadung is most famous. Um, there's an immersion school in Minneapolis called the Dotte, which has two languages that they're merging in, and it's Dakota and Ojibwe. They don't use any English at all and they're using two different languages in there too. So, there has been a, a greater need, um, for Ojibwe language speaking teachers, um, and so we need students as well.
Right. My daughter goes to CSS, so I know she talks about that cla- that class and the, the students that she meets there, so.
So, there's collaborations that appear every once in a while to, you know, a lot, uh, I got a lot to do with my classroom, you know? So, to pull somebody out of their classroom to come and help us too, you know, I will try, um, to get people, I do try to collaborate as much as I can with other programs. Um, so I will be, you know, looking into more field trips and stuff like that too, um, as I develop curriculum here and build my own.
Our special events. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just like taking a trip to the island to look at the bilingual signs over there, you know, to see if they could translate that on their own would be interesting for me to see them do that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, very much.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who wants it?
Third.
A motion by Larry and second by Deb to approve the Ojibwe language three as elective or independent study. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten point two point three, consider funding twenty-first century learning center.
So, if I understand, we're really just, um, approving, including this in next year's budget, is that? Correct. So, I mean, we're still gonna approve next year's budgets. I mean, but we've done the preliminary and this was in the preliminary?
Sixty-eight thousand.
All that, Randy?
Okay, oh, sorry.
No, it was not in the preliminary budget. It was just, oh, no. And we, we were not planning next year.
Okay.
So, this would be something you have to look at the budget.
So, the budget dollar will, will remain the same that was approved, we're just gonna, we'll work it within that number. Is that what it was saying tonight?
No.
Okay, is it additional from the preliminary budget?
So, there was nothing in the preliminary, other than, uh, eighteen thousand roughly that was over and above the grant. Well, I'll move that we amend the preliminary budget, uh, to include seventy-two thousand dollars for the, um, uh, Troller After School program.
We have a motion by Glenn, second by Cindy. Can we have a roll call, Linda?
Aye.
Mary Gary?
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Cindy Gary?
Yes.
Nicole Boye?
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry, but no, was it mentioned that that was just for this year, that we possibly get it back in next year, right?
Yep, exactly. We've had it for, I think, ten years. Um, and this is like our gap year, it sounds like, and hopefully we can get it for another ten after this.
Ten point two point four, oh, wait, yeah, that motion was, paraprofessional budget report. We have a letter here from Ms. G regarding her staffing need for the fall.
So, we have an additional point five request, uh, for her to fill her, her team. We have a student, so coming in from ECC, coming into the 4K program. That Missy has identified that we need to staff for based on the IEP. And so, is that correct, Randy? Point five?
There's a point five out there right now, but now that that student's coming here, go, do it for a day, and then we can reset or follow up to you.
Do we have a point five going back to ECC?
Yes, there's one point five out there also.
Yep.
Because, I mean, if I read this correctly, it says that last year we had somebody there working one-on-one at ECC. So, now that student's coming here, so now that's one full-time person.
And we have two half-time ECCs.
So, there still will be someone back there.
Yes.
And so, everything's setting down, we'll just give a point five.
Aye. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Debbie and a second by Cindy. Can we have a roll call, please, Cindy?
Glenn Carlson?
Yes.
Mary Gary?
Yes.
Cindy Gary?
Yes.
Nicole Boye?
Yes.
Frank Holt?
Yes.
Ten point two point six, consider resignations.
Point five.
Point five.
Point five.
Oh, never mind, I'm on the wrong one. Ten point two point five, consider addendum to Redcliffe Summer Physical Therapy Services.
We have one student who we've identified throughout over the summer to, for PC services to the special education program. Uh, the person who usually does this in the summertime for us, will not be doing it this summer, so we reached out to Redcliffe. And Redcliffe has just, uh, this is an addendum to the original contract that we suspended back in January. And, uh, there, we've already met with them, we've met with the physical therapist, and Missy will be working with him, uh, throughout the summer, uh, upon approval of, of the contract for the summer months. It's, uh, at a rate of fifty dollars per hour in non-trim language at the higher state.
That's for the student to go to Redcliff, to the healthcare center to get physical therapy?
In home?
In home.
Oh, it's gonna be provided in home, okay.
And we had pretty much the same services provided last summer with, with the, that dollar amount, the same two, Randy?
Correct.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Debbie. Can we have a roll call, please?
Nicole Boye?
Yes.
Frank Holtman?
Yeah.
Glenn Halafson?
Yes.
Larry Gary?
Yes.
Charlie Towne?
Yes.
Cindy Gary? Yes.
Ten point two point six, consider resignations, Para and K eight guidance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Debbie, second by Craig. All those in favor?
Aye.
I hope she comes back.
Motion carries. Ten point two point seven, consider two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty middle school, high school student handbook, first reading, waive the second reading.
Wait. Second motion.
Oh, I don't know, did you do, I did both at the same time?
Oh, we did, oh, okay. Sorry.
So, this year is the first time in, well, for a couple of years or more, that the principals reached out to staff and staff at this point, this year, this spring, didn't have any recommendations for edits, um, for both handbooks, the...
Even deeper now.
Middle school, high school, and also, we'll stick, we'll stick to that one and the elementary. But, um, so what we like to do is ask the board for a first reading. If you have additions or edits you would like, uh, provide us that avenue to do that for you and then send it back to you via email. Uh, that way, uh, I guess our, our goal is to have P and E at Lucy get these run up at the end of June. That way, we can get them packaged to the families in mid-July, uh, so they'll embarrass their parents from all these messages.
And all of the annual notices have been updated in them? All the required annual notices, all the correct equal opportunity statements and all of everything?
I'm hoping that the people that are in the do that, um, I can go through it. If you want us to edit, I can go through it and look at those and bring them back.
Just wanna make sure all those are...
Some of those things, those multiple drivers, like the hot lunch form and things like that, those, those are separate.
We can bring those forward anytime.
I don't think we need to bring those forward. Those are standard forms. I don't think we need to bring those forward, those are standard forms. I need.
Second.
We have a motion by Cindy, second by Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will point out that you are Ms. in one of them and Mrs. in another.
She's both.
Depends on the day.
Okay. So the middle school people, you're, I think, Ms. and the elementary, you're Mrs.
Nothing gets by you, Glenn, I like that about you. Your attention to detail is awesome.
Ten point two point eight, consider two thousand nineteen, twenty elementary and La Pointe student handbook. First reading, waive the second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Glenn, second by Debbie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten point two point nine, consider two thousand nineteen, twenty athletic code, first reading, waive the second. We have a motion by Cindy, a second by Larry, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. In that transition period? Well, if they are being here, because it's, whatever, didn't they establish some procedures for that? Yeah. Ten point two point ten, consider Niola policies, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand.
What are those?
So this is more of the review at this point. This should be a review of those policies, because the way our timeline went.
Sure.
Three thousand at this point, realistically, it's not completed, we're going to move that forward. So what we're asking you to do is go through the four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, take a peek, and then at the next policy meeting, we'll review them as a first reading, so to speak, and then bring that back to the July meeting and talk about the rules. And at the same time, look to finish up on the one, two, and threes.
Do we need a motion or anything in this?
Consider, it says, not necessarily. Ten point two point eleven, consider end of year spending. We have a new form for Randy, reflected in addition.
Was, number number four, so it'll always be changing, but I just wanted to bring forward something that they had on the two, six, it was part of the building committee meeting.
That's on the west end, right up here by the parking lot.
Oh, it's the ten-four-twenty-two, yeah.
It's literally fallen off.
How come the balance went up?
The concrete is busted, the wall, it's all wicked up with water, it's.
Oh, well, I'm like, wait, now how come the balance went up, not down?
Because all those numbers changed, up on top. In fact, most of the ones down below changed also.
And additional revenue to.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I like how we spend, you know, ten thousand dollars more and we end up with a thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
And then, you know, we were going to talk about the fund balance, we should really do that before the years, we have a special board meeting, and put those revenues into designated fund balance.
That has to happen before you can do it.
Well, we have a motion by Cindy for this end of the year spending.
I'll second it so we can roll into discussion.
Yeah, in discussion, we can add that.
So are we, we're not expecting to actually write these checks in June? We are expecting to write these checks in June, okay.
We'll have it all in, the cards are ready to go as soon as we say yes, the invoice for the, we can do it all in this year's money. Yes, we'll get it covered.
Yeah, get your scrubber.
I mean, there'd be no reason, I don't think, Randy, unless I'm missing something, to do anything with fund balance with this six hundred and seventy-five thousand, because that's going to be gone.
No, I'm talking before two thirty, we'll have to make a motion to.
To do the other.
Five million, you know, with fund balance, then we have to restrict it.
And if I can real quick just explain, this was something that had come up with the auditors a year ago as far as our fund balance and where do we sit with respect to our peers in terms of unrestricted, unapplied fund balance? And we are at the high end. We have the power as a board to commit that we're going to spend, let's say we've got a five million dollar fund balance. We can say, well, two million of that's, we're going to use for repairs and replacements of physical plant at some point. And then all of a sudden, our unapplied fund balance goes down to three million. And now we're right in the middle of the pack as far as our, you know, what we have as far as unapplied fund balance. Doesn't change anything other than, and we could change that two million anytime we take a vote and change it. So it's really just, it's something the administration can't do, it's something that the board has to do. And to say, you know, X million, we're going to just treat it, it's not really just not spoken for at all. I mean, we have an idea that we're going to be using this for repairs and replacements or whatever, so that was.
Do we need a special board meeting? I think so, yeah, because we can have that discussion tonight.
Yeah, so, so really, you know, because the numbers are fluid, and after tonight's approval, I'm guessing Randy will have much better accuracy in the next couple of weeks, actually not a couple of weeks. And then if we are going to move the additional lower amount that's credited, if we're going to move that somewhere, whether it's our fund for maintenance capital, what, forty-six, forty?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, so if we're going to do that, we probably want to look at a special board meeting with an accurate number.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be any of these numbers, it wouldn't be any of these numbers.
Whatever is remaining.
Yeah, which.
Well, as far as this year-end spending, I would just, I'm, I said it before, is, you know, I don't know if we have the luxury to do a lot of these frills anymore. Glenn and I and Dave did a walk-around of this facility as far as roofing. People, we have some serious, serious issues. I mean, we're, I mean, I think it would be great to have an AC and a gymnasium for a couple of days out of the year when it's hot, but, you know, I just, and it's great to have this stuff, and I like to see the kids have the best, but I'll tell you, there is money to be thrown. This place is literally off the cart, I'm telling you, get up and take a look. You know, we're putting this new matting and everything on there, you know, we're kind of putting the cart in front of the horse. You still have this icing problem, there, the ice is building up and falling off and causing damage. I mean, we've got structural on all of these fascians, outfits that is in dire straits. I mean, the roof itself, we have heat loss that's weeping through. I mean, there is, there is a ton of money to be spent around here that, and I just hate to see us throwing. We're spending four hundred and forty-one thousand on a roof, and it's not fixing the problem, I'm sorry. It's great, it's an asset, if I'm, if I'm wrong, Dave, correct me. I mean, it's, it's great that we're starting somewhere, but, but it's, you know what, we're starting down here and we still have a problem up here that's causing it. And I just, I really seriously believe with all my heart, we need to address some of these issues to get this building watertight and stop. I mean, this four hundred thousand could cost a million in the blink of an eye. We have water leaking in, I mean, it's. Well, the longer we wait, the prices, everything, everybody that knows that buys anything, I mean, I'm, I know we need these vehicles and I know this, and it's, I mean, we use them, we need them, I'm just, you know, I'm just really kind of apprehensive on doing the frills on certain things, when, you know, that sixty thousand or eighty thousand dollars, we've got, we've got cracks in floors that need to be addressed. That's, there's no money, I did a walk-around, I looked, we've got cracked in tiles that need to be fixed or patched or something.
That's the thirty thousand.
Yeah, Dave showed us the spot where the water's running in the back and coming in and puddling and running through a wall and filling up a hallway. And it's, yeah, we have some, there's some serious stuff here to address.
The problem though is timing right now, we do not want to answer our fund numbers, and it's true. So anybody that we have left over, we can put it in that different, that fund forty-six, but we can't touch it until next February.
Correct, correct.
And so I really suggest we put the remainder of that money into that, at least then it's not.
And that would be the special meeting, correct, or could they make that, could we make that motion tonight? Whatever the remaining is at.
I trust your opinion, do we have the money to pay for all of this and we're fine? Can we fix all this and keep everybody happy? Can we do this, are we all right? I mean, this is.
I really think we do, this year especially, because of that additional impact aid money that we got. A lot of these projects are being dealt with right now, I mean, I know it's going to be a lot more. And with that, we're not sure if we should go with the old ventilators, though, I mean, that's a whole other issue because they're saying we should upgrade, these old ventilators aren't, just not good.
I would advise all the board members, if you ever do get a chance, just to take a walk-around and look at, you know, what we looked at. I mean, I was, you know, I'm impressed with what's been done and what's going to happen, I think it's great, but, you know, I was, I know I was shocked, and I believe Glenn was shocked too, at, it's, these are big ticket items. This is huge money to fix this.
I'd be curious as to what the urgency is on the climate, on the air conditioning. Is there urgency on that?
Well.
Jeff?
I attended the eighth grade graduation last week in that packed house, it was warm. We are fortunate this year at graduation, it was a little bit cooler. Fall, when the teachers come back, it's, it's warm in there, you know, there's events going on throughout the fall, September, early October, it gets warm in there.
And kids have to have gym at first period.
It's more of this whole.
It's not attractive.
Improving climate for kids, education, you know, that whole idea of improving your facilities.
I know too, as a, as a coach in August, that gym is hot. I had to, I worry about kids, you know, having some issues.
What does it cost to run it after you pay for it? What does it cost per day to cool? That'd be my, I mean, what are we adding to our monthly cost to operate something? I mean, you're cooling a pretty large space, what is the cost? I mean, it's one thing, you're spending a fifty-six thousand dollars to put in the unit, you still have to run it.
Dave, was there any conversation about that at all?
I don't think we had any idea.
I'm, I'm not opposed to it if we have the money, I'm just cautious.
I mean, obviously we have to be smart, all the door, we have to close.
I trust Randy, and if you're saying it's there and we can do it, it's great. I mean, you know what, we just, as elected people, we need to justify this. We've got teachers standing in front of us that are looking for more money, and here we are, okay, we're boom, 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 boom. We're spending six hundred thousand bucks to crack, and, you know, and two hundred thousand here and there, so I just.
That's my concern too, it just kind of is.
Yeah, we, all of a sudden, we can't just cinch up the purse strings after we just opened the gates.
And this is like a lead year, too, I mean, next year for impact aid, we don't want to, I just know we don't want to add, you know, fund balance.
Well, and that's where this meeting will be important for, important for designating earmarking these monies for something. You're right, Glenn, you do, we do need to, and we know what we should be earmarked for, capital improvement, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, we could put two million in that easily.
And it's not like we, even if we want to, it's something we're going to have to do, regardless whether we're here or the next board is here, that the issues need to be fixed. This is an old building.
Final comments on this, we then asked that the motion approved, and then remaining fund balance that you already talked about, would it have, do you have a special board meeting?
Well, we would still.
We still?
Yeah. Yeah.
No, you're talking about, but we can move this one.
Yeah.
I mean, motion approved this, there's a second, Craig.
So there's a motion by Cindy, a second by Craig, to approve the end of year spending plan that was presented to us with the balance going to the deferred maintenance?
There isn't really a, there isn't a balance, other than the two twenty-four.
Yeah, that, that's the balance.
Okay.
Yeah. Can we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Yes.
Nicole Boy?
Yes.
Frank Holman?
Yes.
Glenn Carlson?
Yes.
Larry Garrigan?
Yes.
Cindy Gary?
Yes.
Just for clarification, I mean, we don't need a special board meeting, it's one that deferred maintenance.
We need a special board meeting for the fund balance conversation.
That's different.
So, yes. I think what, I think what we just did is to approve that six hundred and seventy-five thousand, and also indicated that any excess from this year, the two hundred and twenty-four thousand, would go into fund forty-six. And then we're going to have a special meeting, because we already have a five million dollar fund balance, to talk about moving some of that five million into a, more or less a designated account that we're going to say is going to be for repairs and whatever.
Building another gymnasium.
Yeah.
No, gym first period.
Whatever, but.
Ten point two point twelve, consider dual credit early college credit program policy.
So this is table, a couple of months back, and the policy committee had a discussion last week with finance counselor, principal, homeschool coordinator.
There definitely wasn't a consensus, but it still hasn't changed, or it is changing?
Was there a consensus?
I don't think so.
So, okay, so with the form in front of you, if you look up on top, actually if you go to the bottom, early college credit program, ECCP, formerly known as youth options, there'll be three credits. The student gets one high school credit for an external. So if they drive to Northland or they drive to WITC, they take a three-credit course, they get one credit on their transfer. Up here, okay? Up on top, we have dual credit where the teacher teaches it here. And so the other night, the discussion was, if we're going to keep it similar to the other one on the bottom, then on top it says one semester equals point five, or equals three credits, so that's different than on the bottom. So then that's why there wasn't consensus, because it was a discussion of academic rigor and, you know, competition, and, you know, we should be consistent with the other one, it should be three to one versus three point five. And the idea was those higher-end kits, if they take a dual-credit course here on campus, next speech, the way it's listed here is point five, but then there was talk it should be same as the other one. I'll let you two talk about that, that were there, so.
I'm trying to remember what the argument for keeping it as it is was. I mean, I remember the argument for changing it.
Well, it was because they would have all of their high school English credits before they were senior, by their junior.
There was a fear that.
Well, and there's potential they could graduate early, which the group was in consensus that it wasn't about that, it was about what's best for kids, whether they're advanced in completing dual-credit courses or moving off campus for youth options. It still should be about kids and what's best for them. And the teachers were there to basically say whatever is occurring just should be equitable, that we're teaching a college course in-house or we're having a kid drive all the way to Northland, they're still gaining three college credits. And so I don't know how they, so Shelley talked to that, if they're in-house, it was a three to one, that they would look at maybe some prerequisites to taking that course, because we talked about how do you screen those students that are enrolled in those dual-credit courses? Yeah, I don't, I don't know how I feel right now.
I'm still confused.
About it, because it's.
Shelley said it was being tabled, until the, she convened her plan or how?
No.
I guess I'm confused on why wouldn't it be the same, or why would you, why would someone not want it to be the same? I guess I don't understand.
Some of those reasons, but then, those reasons can all be kind of, have a fix, in how it seemed to me, um, and I think it kinda got Shelley thinking about, well, maybe we could do this, or maybe it could look like this. I don't think it's gotten to that level of planning.
They're, they're right, though, I, I believe that it should be the same, to me, that's how I would look at it, you know, class going over there, like you said, or staying here. But it's being presented to us as the same that it was before, that we said, this doesn't make sense, take this back to committee, right?
Right.
And now it's come forward the same.
I don't, I think it was just, came forward as the same, because there wasn't, frankly, I don't think we had the time to vote at the meeting because of the budget stuff that went over. Um, and as far as what I heard at the meeting, as long as we have, and whether it's for the ECC, or the dual credit, ECCP, or the dual credit, there should be a real vetting of their ability to be able to handle that college-level class, because I, I think we talked about, you know, the worst thing that would happen to those kids is they start, you know, their college career with an F in a class.
Yeah, and then it would affect their financial aid if they needed it, and stuff like that, so that's just.
So I'm, I'm in favor of us making these both three to one, as long as it's with the understanding that we're going to really rigorously vet people's ability to do this. As far as just their ability, their intellectual ability, their academic ability, and not that it's going to, you know.
Maybe point five goes towards an high school elective, but not towards English, I don't know, those are things that can all kind of.
I see what you're saying, I get it, no.
You know, instead of having one full English credit for a semester, maybe you're only getting a point five English and a point five elective, I don't know how it could work, I don't know what those.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there wasn't enough time for conversation.
Should we table it?
We can table it.
If Shelley comes back in July, and if Dan is here with, if it's worked, or if we have that conversation.
And then they want to.
Let's do that, I'd like to hear more.
A plan in place of why.
I'd like to hear more, I wanna, I'd like to hear their thought behind it, and like you say, why not? I like that idea of doing that, though, that makes more sense.
Second.
We have a motion by Debbie, a second by Glenn, to table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten point two point thirteen, achievement gap reduction.
So, Ms. Dean, Reagan?
I'm here in attendance. This policy is presented to me as an annual board approval, basically, talks about the gap deduction, performance objectives. Pretty much a pretty standard, you read across each grade level.
Oh, my goodness.
And there's a lot there, there's a lot there to do. Five-year achievement year-end key contract, that's a reform. She said it's ready to go, we just need board approval, and it's, it's required, we can move forward.
Motion approved, okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Cindy, a second by Glenn, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eleven, adjourned to executive session in accordance with Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. One, hiring recommendations, assistant middle school girls' basketball, PBIS coordinator, PBIS coaches. Two, ratify support staff contract for nineteen, two thousand twenty. Ratify teacher contract for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Ratify non-affiliated and administration contract for two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty. Can we have a roll call? That was my motion.
I did not make a plan to stay on the mainland tonight, just because.
It's a date thirty-four.
I know, but I know.
Are we hiring the math interventionist too?
Yeah.
Are we supposed to hire him?
Yes. Yes, the math interventionist too.
This will be the last time we use this? Linda?
Yeah, what?
We have a motion by Larry, and a second by Craig, can we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Yes.
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 Larry Garagin?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, I got lots, too much paper here.
We all got our own room of paper.